Okay. All right, I'm gonna call the Hutter City Council meeting to order for September 26, 2022 and just remind everyone to either silence or turn off your cell phones. First of all, I'm gonna do the land acknowledgement and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. As we meet tonight, let us all remember that today we are stewards of land that has been home to indigenous peoples for thousands of years before the recent arrival of the European heritage dominant culture. We honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I am pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of North Dakota, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have some new members of our force, soon to be new members of our force, who are gonna take their oath of office this evening. So if you'd like to come forward and hopefully I don't do anything too bad to your names here. Ben Oka, Ryan Junt, and Austin Griffin. Jen, you have these guys in camera for the audience. I'm gonna have you guys go this way, put your body back down and hopefully a little bit of your voices will come on the front here, hopefully. So I'm gonna repeat the oath and when I say I, then you state your names and I'll just do a piece of it. First of all, welcome before I start this and we're so happy you're here. I'm sure our chief is extremely happy you're here. I hope we love the river and they treat you well and I know you guys want me to go. Okay, I, your names.
Austin Griffin, Brian Jim.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I have support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And the city charter of the city of Hood River.
And the city charter of the city of Hood River.
And the ordinances and resolutions.
And the ordinances and resolutions.
Of said city.
Of said city.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of police officer.
Faithfully perform the duties of police officer.
Of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
Of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
During my continuance there and.
During my continuance there and.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I think we have some things for you guys. Okay, as many pictures as you'd like. And if anyone else would like to come up and have their picture with their specific person, you are happy to come up and use it. I want them to get a picture.
Do you think she can get? I don't have anything. I'm just excited to have them here. Ben and Austin both come from the Portland metro area. Austin currently lives in the Dallas, which is great for us. Ryan is a 11-year veteran from Moro County. He left for, worked there for 11 years, left there, went to Idaho for a short stint, and then love brought him back. And so he was looking for a job back in it. So he also resides in the Dallas area. And Ben is hoping to get up close to Hood River. He's got a sister and a brother-in-law that live here. So he's excited. So excited to see people in the roots here. Absolutely. So yeah.
All right, we've got the oath right here. So if you guys each want to sign your respective one that has your name on it and then our city recorder will find us later.
Everyone, we have a little bit of a stat on this conference.
For the exciting city council meeting.
Thank you three for your willingness to serve.
Just, I'm just gonna, because the camera just shows four of us up here, but we also have Eric Hayne and Gladys Rivera on our Zoom call this evening. So I just wanted to state that for the record. All right. And I was gonna say now we have business from the audience, but there is no audience. And there is no one signed up for Zoom to speak for business from the audience either. So we'll just go ahead with our presentations this evening. And we have a Hutter County Transit Master Plan update from Amy Schlappi.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Let me just go ahead and share my screen real quick. I'm sorry. Can you see my full screen or are you just seeing my?
Screen in your, in the next slides. If you hit that little book on the bottom right-hand side, then it'll show the larger screen.
I think it's showing on my other screen and I have up my other moniker. And so I apologize. I'll just do this. All right. Great. Well, thank you. For you, those of you who don't know me, my name is Amy Schlappi. I'm the executive director of Hood River County Transportation District or Columbia Area Transit or the cat bus. I'm here today to provide an update on the Transit Master Plan update that we are currently working on. I was here a couple months ago and gave you a brief update on our first survey and I'm just here to follow up and talk about our second survey as well. And then I'll give you some time to ask any questions that you may have or any feedback. Our second survey is going over our proposed transit service options. And because of my limited time here, I'm going to be talking only about the city of Hood River options. So as a reminder, we have five focus areas that we're looking at. Hood River East, Hood River West, Cascade Locks, Odell, and Lower Highway 35, and then Parkdale and Upper Highway 35. And then we also are looking at the I-84 corridor. Okay, so for a timeline, we will have our draft Transit Master Plan here in December and with our target of our adopted final TMP in spring of 2023. So our first survey was our community survey and the purpose of that survey was to gain insight to rider and community experience with transit, identify real perceived gaps, needs, and future mobility options to explore. And we did this by reaching out to the community via online, in person, and with help from our awesome partner organizations. So our targeted in-person outreach, we went out to lots of different local businesses. Here are a couple pictures of our setups at the library, Merck Product Guanajuara, as well as Pine Street Bakery. So when we reached our respondents that took the survey, the majority of them were from Hood River East, after that Hood River West, and then after that Odell and Lower Highway 35. So the majority were in that 45 to 64 range. And then next was the 25 to 44 range. I wanted to highlight, we got about 10% of over 65 and then about seven and a half percent of individuals who are under 18, which I thought was amazing. So the majority of our respondents who identified their race and ethnicity were white Caucasian. Second was Hispanic or Latino. We asked respondents to tell us about any barriers they experienced while using cat. Most report that their cat doesn't run when they need it to. After that was a bunch of other different responses and lack of bus shelters. We asked respondents what needs to change or improve for cat to have a greater role in their community slash life. The top priority is expanded bus routes, then extended days, hours for cat services, and then the frequency of service. We asked what extended hours they would like to see. And most asked for evening services. I'm sorry, weekend service first and then evening services after that, and then commute times in the morning and evening. We asked which safety measures they would like to see us add and it was lighting and sidewalks. So what we did is we took all this information and much more. Those were not the only questions we asked. And we created a bunch of proposed options for each of our focus areas, which I'll talk about in a second. But then we also create a list of other things that we wanted to do or to improve in order to increase efficiencies and increase ridership. So one of them is looking at stops and amenities. We looked at our land use and worked with a consultant to make sure that our transit routes match up or our proposed transit routes match up with the development that will be occurring within the county. And they will also be creating a toolkit for us. So when new development comes into the county and they want to include transit and it makes sense, they will have all the information they need in order to do so. And then the third is first last mile options, which will create mobility hubs, which is really kind of a big theme throughout all of our different proposed options to kind of provide the most options. Now, I'll talk about that in a little bit. So for stops and amenities, the stops that we have out there are really, there's a wide variety. There's A-frames, there's a little bit more permanent, and then there is actually permanent signs. And our hope is to formalize all of those stops and to ensure that there's not such a wide range. Mobility hubs or first last mile solutions will have a large amount of mobility options. That'll be microtransit, car share, parking rides if appropriate, bike parking, et cetera, et cetera. Lots of different options that are complementary to public transit to help grow our ridership. So our first focus area, so Hood River East, option one, right here, and hopefully you all can see this. But the first option maintains our current circulator route and then it adds a direct commuter service for commuting times between the downtown port area and the Heights. So it will expand it, the evening service. So the evening service will go until 10:00 PM. It will reduce travel time during peak commute times. It won't be a huge systematic change, which could be beneficial and it will be easy to implement. It won't be a huge systematic change, which could be beneficial, and it will be easy to implement. The different advantages are that does not actually reduce travel times for those who are starting or ending west of Thirteenth Street. So if someone's trying to get from the Heights to Walmart, it's still, you know, it's a good thirty-ish minute ride. And then if they're trying to go back to the Heights, they're going back, it's about a fifteen minute ride. But let's say they wanted to go to the downtown port area, that's close to a thirty, thirty-five minute ride. And then our second option for Hood River East focus area is a traditional linear route. So it would travel in both directions. And it, again, we would extend the service hours into the evening. It would increase the frequency to thirty minutes throughout the day. Have more direct service to depending on the different areas that you're trying to go. Both this and option one, we would complement with a, a west side focus option, so they would work together. And the disadvantages is you're changing an established route, which might be seen as a disadvantage in the short term, but in the long term. Perhaps based on the community's needs, it's actually a benefit. And some west side neighborhoods will have a reduced level of service. So those folks that are west of the aquatic center. And right now they have the run or the, yeah, the route goes directly through there and that would change. So for the Hood River West focus area, so we would be adding a completely new service on for the west side. This would connect, the major focus would be to connect the mobility hubs. So that folks could go from the west side and connect to the east side services. And you'd have for option one, it's focusing on the more developed areas of the west side. So you have improved access to west side neighborhoods. There's more options for students and parents as it gets near to the mobility hub at Brookside. Creek, and that would be near the, the Hood River High School. And then of course you have the west side elementary, and then you have the Hood River Middle School as well. And then just increased transit options in general with the different mobility hubs. The disadvantages is it doesn't serve the rural neighborhoods that as of now also aren't being served, but doesn't really give an option to them. And obviously where we put new stops as it is a new service, there'd be infrastructure that would be needed. So for option two, this service would serve the, the more rural areas of the west side. Again, it's a, it's a new service, it's gonna connect the mobility hubs. It does not go to the aquatic center, so not as if I have a direct link to the east side service. And it serves a low density area, which the ridership levels might not be as high as if you did. The west side option that is focuses more on the developed neighborhoods. And again, because it's, you're having a new service with new stops, it's a new infrastructure. So if you have any questions and feedback, I would love to hear and answer any that you may have.
Thanks for the presentation, Amy. Yeah, you, you're saying option one, option two for, you know, the west side of Hood River and downtown. So these are things that your board is deciding, or this is something you're deciding through the strategic planning process. As you get more feedback, or where, where are these decision making processes regarding these options?
Yeah, so great question. So these will all be within the, the second survey that is actually now live. And you'll, we just put it as a soft launch on Friday. So the, the community members are going to be weighing in on these as well as the different proposed options for the other focus areas. And then. Once those are done, the, the board will approve them. And I mean, it is important to note that. These all kind of depend on a variety of factors. They'll depend on funding available and just. You know, variety of, of different things. And they might have to be tweaked by staff depending on those different factors. But the, the intent would be to, to take the community's feedback and to create the, in the long term. Create the services that the, the community is asking for.
Okay, others, questions? Megan?
Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Amy. Two questions. One, how long is the survey gonna be up? So I can tell folks?
It'll be up for a month.
Okay, can you give me a date because my brain doesn't work?
I'm sorry about that. And so I believe October twenty fourth.
Okay, great, thank you. And are you gonna be doing similar outreach to folks who maybe don't have as much access to the internet? In person at, at, you know, stores and places where they're likely to be?
Yes, we will be. And it won't be quite as in-depth, just because this isn't quite as, the, the outreach timeframe isn't quite as long. But we will be hitting, or we will be going to those different locations that where we saw a lot of interactions. So I'm going out to Mercado Guadalajara, working with our different partner organizations. I'm going to Dog River Coffee and actually working with the businesses. That we saw the most return for investment there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Amy, for the information for your presentation.
No questions for me. Thank you for coming, Amy.
No, no questions for me. You've all asked the questions I had in mind. Thank you. Thank you for being here, Amy.
And Derek?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And for all of you, the survey is at engagecatbus.org. And you can also, that's where we've published all of our different reports for this process so far. So you can read to your heart's content.
Amy, is there a, like a social media push for this one? Like, do you have a post somewhere that we, we could just easily share it as the city?
Yeah, I have not yet shared it, but I will put it out. And if it's okay, I will, I'll reach out to.
Abigail, yeah.
And I'll, I'll make sure that all that information is there.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Amy. Keep us informed on how it's going and how can we, how we can be partners. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, that is the only presentation we have this evening. So we have a public hearing. So I have a script for the public hearing. I called a order, public hearing for ordinance twenty sixty nine. An amendment to create chapter three point four oh of the Hood River Municipal Code establishing a nonprofit. Corporation low income housing tax exemption. This is a continuation of the hearing on this proposed ordinance that we began on September twelfth. Tonight, we will begin with a short staff report that responds to issues and questions raised by counselors at the first meeting. Then we will take any public testimony, and we did not have anyone sign up to do any testimony this evening. Finally, we will close the hearing, deliberate and render a decision on the proposed ordinance. The final adoption will have to occur in the regular portion of our meeting agenda. Just to double check, are there any members of the public online or present? That wish to testify on ordinance twenty sixty nine, either against or, or neutral? Okay, Jen's in, signifying no. She's monitoring our online people. So there's no one to testify. All right, so staff report.
Good evening. I'm here in lieu of Abigail. And so I'm gonna kind of respond with, I worked with Dustin on, on this ordinance. And I think Dustin distributed like a Q and A response step. I saw an earlier draft. I don't think I saw the final. He and I talked about it, and I think he changed that. And I think there's a change, there is a typo in there. Kate, you brought that to my attention. In the, his response, if you could point that out.
It was on the Q and A page. So there was a cover sheet and it's not, doesn't have a number on it. But it's at the beginning part of our packet, it's the second page of the explanation that Dustin had. It is the one, two, third answer under Q and As, and it's the very last word. In that, and it should be.
Why don't you go ahead and read the whole question and answer?
Okay, so the question was, what level of coordination is required to ensure alignment of taxing bodies? Is the fifty one percent of quote taxing district consent unquote needed to be exempt from any? Percentage of ad valorem taxes? And the answer is section point oh five oh directs the initial duties and findings to the finance director. Who shall make findings of eligibility. There are no explicit noticing requirements to other tax bodies. Section oh six oh states that the exemption authorized by the city is in addition. To any other exemption provided by law. Therefore, the ordinance is complimentary. To other tax bodies or agencies who have approved their own exemptions. Until fifty one percent of consenting taxing bodies agree to the exemption. Only those taxing bodies that have granted exemption will have their taxes. And this is the word that needs to be changed. It says rebated, but what it really should be is something like waived.
Right, this is, this is not supposed to be money that we pay out. So that. The, that kind of provides a good launching point for my staff reports such as it is. The, you've been through this once already. We had, people had a number of questions. I had some answers, and then Mark Zanmiller over the weekend had a number of other questions. I think Megan had a question. So what's the best way to structure this? Should I go through Mark's questions? And that might prompt people and start the discussion. Or what's your pleasure?
Yeah, I think. I mean, Mark had more questions after this was sent out, and I. Did other people that had questions get their questions answered? Or did this explanation just bring up more questions? I guess that's, that's.
Megan has an unanswered question, I think.
Megan has unanswered questions still, okay. I just have one question that has not been answered. Those, this did not bring up new ones. Okay, right. And did you have anything additional to him? No, okay. No, and, and I didn't either. Gladys or Eric? Let's, let's just start with Megan's question. Okay. So.
I think you asked the, when people get kicked out of the program, it's in oh seven oh sub A. It's sort of what I've called the clawback provision. And I think your question, it only, the, it only refers to being kicked out if the city had granted an exemption. To property in anticipation of future development of low income housing. What about those that I guess were in, were built, and we discover aren't complying? Is that the gist of it?
Yeah, I, I, I know the, or based on last meeting's conversation, I know the intent is for both. And I just read on page seven of the ordinance in our packet, three dot forty dot seventy A. I just read that paragraph is only referring to property that hasn't been built on, and I don't believe that's the intention. And either I'm reading it wrong, being a dummy, or I'd like it.
Right. So the, here's how, let me kind of step back a little bit about, there are two ways to get into the program. And that's under one of the earlier provisions. The criteria oh three oh B that comes in if the property is A, or number one, occupied by low income person. So it's already developed and, and. Qualifies as low income, you can get into the program that way, or it's held for purposes of developing. So it's undeveloped at that point with the promise of proceeding with low income housing. So the one that we anticipate, and I think the statute anticipates the most. Likely candidate for enforcement is this undeveloped property that doesn't turn out to be developed. So the clawback provision oh seven oh A expressly deals with that. The other one, and, and understand that this is driven by a statute, a fairly granular, detailed. So much complicated statute, number one, but also statute that it's difficult to read it and understand completely. How this is gonna work in practical terms on the ground. So if you've got an already developed property that converts to low income and wants to get a tax exemption. This, the, the city has basically an ongoing requirement that you, if you want to stay in a program, you have to qualify for the program. Going forward. So I think that's an easy one to enforce on. Basically, we have unilateral authority to kick. People out for not. Complying with the program.
But that doesn't, I mean, this is, okay, we found out you, and I'm gonna go the worst case scenario. You lied about the incomes of folks for the last five years. We've given you a tax exemption. This should be the ability to clawback that five years.
Basically, I would have on any of these forms that the applicants fill out, it would, you know, all representations have to be truthful and factually correct. And any non-compliance will result in your expulsion from the program. Basically, we have, it's our program and, and you have to comply with the rules. And if you don't.
Expulsion from the program is not the same as we can take back the last five years of tax exemption. I mean, expulsion just means you don't get tax exemption going forwards, but we don't recoup the loss.
Let's see, so the, the clawback part of it is F. When you don't comply upon determination, that gives us the authority to clawback on. The tax that wasn't paid because it was omitted. So it, you know, to make it super clear to give you. To, to let the world know, oh, by the way, you can't lie on the forms and you must comply with the representations made. It wouldn't probably hurt to put in the express, add it to subsection A. But I would say if you've got someone violating the program, you have the authority. Because they misrepresented on the form. The ability to kick them out of the program and retrieve, get paid back for taxes that had been waived. So it wouldn't hurt, I guess, to make it express in this particular provision oh seven oh A.
But the clawback that you're talking about, the, the language that actually says you can get that money back. For not to exceed ten years is number three under that, correct? F three.
Yes. F sub three.
Sub three.
Yeah.
Right, but A, A is what's saying what, what properties are eligible for clawback, basically.
Well, who gets kicked out? Termination. Yeah.
Because A also said that if you violate any provision of this chapter, you get.
Right, that, so that's what, if, if you want to make it express, I. My feeling is if we kick someone out and claw it back for, for failing to comply with the representations in the form. You know, we have that authority, we can even put it on the forms. And the appeal right, that doesn't provide for an appeal right. There is under state law, you could go through a writ review process. But that, that's a very difficult process for anyone to do. And it's very favorable to the local government in making its decision. So it wouldn't hurt to have that here. On, in subsection A, I don't think it's particularly necessary since it's kind of, that's the whole program. You've gotta. Provide low income housing and meet the qualifications, and if you don't, you've misrepresented. The whole reason for getting this tax abatement.
So if we just had on, on A, you know. Basically, any project that's granted an exemption under this chapter and get rid of the qualifying statement of to property in anticipation of future development. And it's just any property that was granted an exemption with this, that would cover everything.
Yeah, because there'd be two ways to get in, either in anticipation of development or you're already developed.
Okay, so can I have us just? Okay, so can I have us just get rid of that? Not say the whole thing, but in that first sentence of A, if the city of the river has granted an exemption under this chapter to property in anticipation of future development of low income housing. Just get rid of that, um.
You could say.
And, um, oh my god, that's hard to read, has granted exemption under this chapter. Um. Just get rid of to property in anticipation of future development of low income housing.
I would add to it, I would say in anticipation of or. A- actual use of property. Anticipation of future development or actual use of property for. So after the word development, say, or actual use of property for.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a note on that.
So that, that kind of sets the stage for my, my initial general response to um, uh, Mark Zandmiller's comments. And I, I don't have, hi- his comments are asking for kind of a granular. Description of how the program's gonna work and suggests that there's maybe some superfluous language. In this ordinance and. My first response is this is driven by state law, and so I'm, as a general proposition reluctant to. Change this language, which is driven by state law, just because. All the regulated, the taxing bodies, the regulated community and the city. You know, have an expectation how this is supposed to work in part based on what the statute says. And it's difficult to uh. Comply with or work with the program if there's this additional local variant. Uh, that's not in state law, that's unique to Hood River, so that's why I'd recommend we not change the language just in general. Um. From the provisions of that state law provides, but also. I do not have a real good idea of on the ground how it's going to work. And so I'm reluctant to get rid of any of the parts until I have a comfort level as to how this is really going to work. People come in uh and apply for this with the city's finance director. Then the finance director decides based on the documentation whether they qualify or not. And if they, if the finance director grants it, then it's granted subject to those terms that they comply with the program. And then who gets, who then has the burden of cheerleading to the other taxing districts to get them to sign off also? Cause generally, the city will be the only one that adopts such an ordinance as this. And it's incumbent upon someone, either the city or the, the uh owner, the developer, to go and get the others to buy into it. I anticipate the city will participate because I've seen that's how other local governments have done it. Um, they've gone uh with the uh developer to the other taxing districts and. Sometimes it doesn't turn out to be a yes or no answer, for example, if it's a fire district. Uh, they might say, well, we'd be willing to um waive the property tax if we get some backfill of some sort, some way from the city. Um, and so that can happen a number of different forms, but again, it's not a yes or no answer. Um, and so in the end, what they're looking for, what this ordinance is looking for is a, a check the yes box. From another taxing district that the property will be exempt from taxes. Um, and so the developer gets the benefit of that until. There's a total of fifty-one percent of the total tax liability, in which case all the rest are waived by operation of law. Um, so who does the legwork, who has the burden? It's not super clear to me in terms of how it's gonna work at the city level, but that's generally how it's supposed to work. Um, so I'm reluctant to, to, you know, take out the sections that Mark suggests should be removed because it might disable this program entirely. Um, the other section that he suggests should be taken out is the five year in anticipation of development. Um, again, I'm not sure who all would fall in that category, the only. Example of that category that I can think of is our property, Rand Road. Where if we were to tomorrow, uh, convey it in some fashion to a, a developer to develop according to our terms. They would be subject to property taxation, but should be qualified, should qualify for this. It's not gonna build out for some years. But they would want the benefit of that tax abatement now and to start gathering up to fifty-one percent. To finally get it all abated. So that's the only example I can think of, so it'll take some time to do that. Uh, you have personal experience with how this is going to work on Rand Road. So that's why I suggest don't take out the five year in anticipation of low income development provision. Um. It's another one here. The clawback provision. Um. It's supposed to keep you in the driver's seat. Um, the, the initial decision is made by the finance director because that's. Why you have administrators who are qualified to do this, do this. And then if there's um a clawback, someone in the city has to go back and, and kick someone out of the program and recoup. Unpaid taxes, that's the decision that you would make. So those are kind of my quick responses to Mark's concerns, I, I get it, but I'm, I'm just reluctant. Because this is a very complicated statute and it's not clear to me how it's really gonna work in Hood River. I, I know how it works in some other jurisdictions, but everyone is different. So any other questions?
Does anyone have additional questions for Dan?
So Dan, just like with anything, if we go forward and um. It, something needs to be fixed or amended, we, we can do that, right?
Yes, yeah. We have the ability, I mean, it's a, it's a tax abatement, we're, my objective is to keep the city in the driver's seat of it, of the house administered. Gatekeeper roles coming in or getting kicked out of the program. Um, so if we run into some ambu- ambiguity or difficulty how it works. Like the coordination issue, I'm not sure how that's gonna work. But it has to work some way, so yes, we can amend it to tweak it to work better, make it more clear.
Right, additional questions, anyone? Okay, um, so I'm gonna go ahead with a little bit more procedural um language here, um. If anyone has any additional questions as we go forward about procedure, please state them. A quorum of the council is present. Um, do any counselors have any new conflicts of interest to disclose since the first hearing? Uh, when we started this hearing the last time? No. No.
No.
No.
No. Okay, no one has any additional conflicts, um, we have heard from the staff already. Um. And we have asked staff any questions we had. All right. Um, and Jen, just to double check and confirm, no one um has asked to speak. This evening? Okay, all right, um, I'll now close the public hearing. And open for council deliberations.
Well, I might have done this out of order, but my deliberation is the addition of the. Couple words Dan suggested.
Okay.
That's clarification to point section oh seven oh sub A.
That's, that's correct, that's where I wrote it in.
Or actual use of property for.
Okay, and that would, that would come after um in anticipation of future development. And the addition would be or actual use of property for.
I think anticipation of future development of or actual use of property for low income housing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any um additional deliberations on this?
I'm, I'm going language.
Thanks for the.
Okay, Gladys, comments?
None.
Okay, Eric?
No, I think, thank you, Dan, for his detailed efforts there and supportive of the measure.
And you saw there are a couple of changes since the last time to clarify. Uh, decision makers and who's the review body, it's the governing body, that's the city council, the buck stops with you guys.
Fair enough, no, I appreciated that clarification because my mind went immediately to assuming the municipal court, so. Um. I just thought that was good to clarify.
Yeah, we will issue black robes to all of you.
Please go. Ooh, okay, um, so I'm looking for a motion to place ordinance twenty sixty-nine on tonight's agenda for first reading by title only.
I would move we place uh ordinance twenty sixty-nine uh on the regular council meeting. Um, for first reading by title only.
With, with the amendment.
With the amendment, thank you, Dan.
Okay, Megan's made a motion and Tim has seconded that motion to place ordinance twenty sixty-nine on tonight's agenda for the first reading by title only. Um, with the amendment that Megan made. Um. All those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye.
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 Any names? Any abstentions? Chair votes aye. Right, thank you, Dan, on that one. Appreciate it. Um. So we have a work session, but there, we don't have any items on the work session, I'll go ahead and open that. And then adjourn the work session, because we don't have any items, um, a regular council meeting, I'll go ahead and open that. Um, I, the only thing we have, um. On that is this, the addition of the reading, which is already under city recorder, the reading of ordinance twenty sixty-nine that we just placed on that. Um. Agenda.
And, and I have a short staff report on that, if I could.
You have a what?
A short staff report or some comments before you get rolling.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, go ahead with that, Dan, and then we'll do consent agenda after that.
There were a, a couple of issues raised, um. At the last meeting about the cell tower amendment, mayor, this is an amendment to a lease, uh, ground lease that the city has. Uh, and uh, I think it was Mark who had, um, he wanted more of an open-ended. Ability for the city to attach whatever equipment it saw fit to this cell tower, it's a monopole. And um, so we went back to the uh, to American Tower and they, uh, because the. Provision that we had in this draft specified a particular type of um. Te- telemetry that the public works people attach, and let's see, what did it say, um? Um.
Was a specific vendor, so the.
Yeah, it was a specific vendor, here it is, a particular, specific type of. Uh, telemetry that might change, and as Mark's point was that, you know, over the next, over the duration of this term. It could change significantly, and so we just want the ability to put anything we want on the tower. And not be bound to this particular type of uh, equipment. And um. In, in my, there are a couple of things that um. Make me think that what's reasonable is to take out the specificity, but the, it's not. Be um commercially reasonable to have us, that, give us the unilateral right to put anything we want on. Uh, and so um, the ATC has agreed to remove the Mueller systems reference. So it, it will just be our, um. Uh. Uh, public works, uh, metering telemetry can go on there, uh, my. Uh, advice to you is that if things change in, you know, ten or twenty years or whatever, and it's something that's not covered. Um, you can always seek permission from the, excuse me, the tower owner. To put something else in different up, the thing is, it's not commercially reasonable for, to expect them to allow just anything to go up there. Uh, I think Mark believed that the issue was, uh, they would be fearful we'd. Kind of open up our own cell business and start leasing their tower space to other cell providers perhaps. What their issues are is they don't want us to put things on their tower that would compromise its structural integrity. Or interfere, give near field interference to their uh, cell customers. For their antennas, and so that's why they're not going to uh, allow us unilateral authority, just put anything else we want up there. This covers my client in terms of the things we know we're gonna want to put up in the foreseeable future. Um, so they're willing to amend that uh, language to the, to the lease amendment. Um, let's see, what else did he have? He. Wanted, um. And uh, the thing is that, um. So this is also, um. He questioned whether there is a conflict that it doesn't require city approval for them to add. Cell service providers to the tower, but yet they're obligated to pay us ten percent. Of the proceeds, the rental proceeds that they would derive from their cell customers. Um, in my experience, this is a very weird deal because it's a spec tower. On city property, I don't know that I've ever seen that before, usually it's cell providers put up their own. Ta- antenna arrays on city property or put up their own in tower on city property, but to have a, a company that. It's as a spec tower company, they just build towers and they rent the space like an office building to cell providers. Um, so it's unusual as a, for a city to have this. And I've never seen where the city gets a cut of the take. Here they're, and we're entitled to ten percent of their rent proceeds from new customers, so you know, if ATT comes on the tower, we get ten percent of their monthly. Rent that A, ATC derives from that, that's very unusual. The other unusual thing is this ten thousand dollars signing bonus, I've never seen that either, these are kind of big deals in, in my experience. Um, but um, they don't need to seek our permission to put new customers on, new cell antenna arrays. Um, but they are obligated to pay us the ten percent, so that's not contradictory at all. Um, when they start to uh, collecting rents from new cell providers, they pay us ten percent, and if they don't, they're in breach. And I, I do not expect them to be sneaking new cell uh, arrays on this tower and. In order to avoid the ten percent tax, this is exactly the business they're in. And if they get caught, you know, breaching the, these leases, word will spread to other local governments around the country like wildfire. And so this is, that would be disastrous for their business model, so I, I don't expect them to cheat. It'll be very hard for them to cheat because we'll notice when a new antenna array goes up. Um, and we would expect shortly to get some rent from that every month. So I, I don't see that as a real concern in this. Um. And if there's a, if they go up in height, they've got to go through the land use process, this does not give them a free pass for that. Um. And I, they may have to do that, we'll just wait and see. Um. So with that, that one change that'll happen to this proposed lease amendment. To take out the Mueller systems reference, so it'd just be generic, uh, public works telemetry. That's the change that they've agreed to, that's a good thing, the other uh, suggestions I, I don't agree with. Questions?
No questions here, Eric or Gladys, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, no additional questions, Dan?
Okay, I'm here if, if any come up.
Okay, thanks, um. So we opened, we have opened the regular council meeting, um, and so the consent agenda. Um, would be next, which has council meetings, um, OLCC annual renewals. And the janitorial contract on it. Does anyone need anything removed?
Can we uh? Move the, the OLCC one, or just vote on that separately, sure, I have a. A million relationship with a difference in.
Okay. All right, so let's, um, any, any other, anything else on this? Okay, so.
Madam Mayor, actually, just point of clarification, are we voting as part of the consent agenda, are we voting on the uh, the cell tower issue, or is that separate?
Um, the cell tower would be separate because that's under regular business and not under consent.
Got it. I, I sort of jumped the gun on that.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
So, um, let's do consent agenda with just council meeting minutes and janitorial contract.
So I move, we approve the consent agenda minus the OLCC. So I move we approve the consent agenda minus the OLCC annual renewals.
Second. Um, Megan's made a motion and Jessica has seconded the motion to approve the consent agenda with only including council meeting minutes from September twelfth. And renewal of the janitorial contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays? Chair votes aye.
And then I'm gonna move that we approve uh, number two or Oregon Liquor Control Commission annual renewals.
Megan's um, made a motion to approve the Oregon Liquor Control Commission annual renewals and Tim has seconded that motion. Um, I'll just roll call vote on that, uh, Tim?
Aye.
Megan, yes. Uh, Gladys?
Aye.
Eric?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna just uh, disclaim a tri- a de minimis amount of personal income. Um, from local establishments, I don't, it's, I don't think it's impacting my judgment at all on these issues, so I'm just gonna. Uh, maybe I can come back through in case someone wants to disqualify me, but uh. I'm just, it's de minimis, but uh, there's some income there.
Okay, so you're going to abstain, is that right Eric, is that what you're doing?
Um. Uh, maybe I should, maybe you know, maybe I will, it's just easier.
I'd recommend it.
Okay, I will.
Okay, so and Eric's abstaining and Jessica? Okay, um, and chair votes aye. So we got four votes, so we do have four votes in that, all right. Um, so the regular business item is the cell tower. And we've gotten a thorough explanation from Dan on that, thank you so much. Um, any additional um, just discussion or questions? A discussion amongst ourselves that you guys.
I appreciate the change, getting rid of the specific contractor name, I think that's really great. Um, but otherwise I'm comfortable with this.
Okay. Um. There's, oh, we don't have a page number, but there's a. Staff recommendation.
I authorize the city manager to sign the post cell tower lease agreement extension with the modification. Presented today.
Oh, I think about, hey, uh, Jessica has um. Recommended the city manager sign the proposal for the cell tower lease agreement extension with the modi- with the modification we discussed. And Megan has seconded that motion, any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Nays?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'm I'm not a nay, but I had for different reasons recused myself on this issue, so I'll do the same here, will not vote.
Okay, no, um, abstaining from voting is Eric and chair votes aye. Right. Um, now we are on to city recorder. Reading of ordinance twenty seventy.
Your honor, let's enter to the motion for the second time of reading of ordinance twenty seven by title only.
So moved. Second. Megan makes the motion and um, Jessica has seconded that motion.
Uh, Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Rivera?
Aye.
Counselor Meta?
Aye.
Counselor Haney?
Aye.
Counselor Saunders?
Yes.
Your honor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty seventy and then ordinance pending title five, business taxes, licenses and regulations. Uh, chapter five point one zero, short term mental. Operating licenses, section five point one zero point zero three zero definitions. And five point one zero zero eight zero criteria for approval of an operating license. Operating license. To a single license at a time and separate and separate license.
Thank you, Jen. All right, and then we have the reading of ordinance twenty sixty nine. A nonprofit corporation low income housing tax exemption for the first time by title only.
I will move, we read ordinance twenty sixty nine, nonprofit corporation, low income housing tax exemption. Uh, for the first time by title only with the amendment discussed tonight.
I second.
Hey, Meg has made the motion and Gladys has seconded that motion. Um, to read ordinance twenty sixty nine by title only.
Counselor Haney?
Aye.
Counselor Saunders?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Aye.
Counselor Meta?
Aye.
Counselor Rivera?
Aye.
Your honor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty sixty nine, ordinance pending three revenue and finance. Federal revenue school code by reading a new chapter, chapter three point four zero. Nonprofit corporation low income housing tax exemption, implementing ORS three point zero seven point five four zero. To three point. Three oh seven point five four eight establishing. And a foreign housing tax exemption program for qualifying nonprofit housing providers.
Thank you, Jen. All right, um, mayor call, planning commission interviews, um. And I'm trying to remember the number of people we have, I believe we might have three openings. But I cannot remember, I know that Bill Irving's is up. And I cannot remember the others ones that are out, but there, I think there's three and. So um. We need a counselor that might help with those interviews, I think that Dustin said. They would try to do this within the next week or two and try and, you know, plump them all together so that, you know, maybe it would just be one meeting. With. It'd take an hour and a half or something, you know, like twenty minute interviews or something like that, hour and a half total. Um, and then bring recommendation back like, like we've done previously, you know, several different times. Through this, I think there there may be some uh, planning commissioners that are going to re-up and some might not, so. Or put their name back in the hat, they were, they still have to be interviewed. In the next week or two, in the next week or two, I believe, yeah, they're gonna try and do it fairly.
Do we have, do we have an idea as to when within the next week or two? Like.
I don't, because Dustin isn't here, he's on vacation this week, and so, you know, he would be coordinating those. Together, so I don't know. Well, no, it won't be this week, it'll be next week or the week after then.
So we're we're doing a big shutdown at work, so I'm gonna pull myself out.
Okay, because you have to be there for that, okay, right.
I'll be at League of Oregon uh, conference next week, so I will be unavailable, but if it was the week. After I could potentially uh, help, I just need a no dates and times.
Okay.
If they need to do it next week, I can potentially do that.
Okay, all right, so what I'll, I'll uh, let Abigail and Dustin know that if it ends up. That it would be next week, Jessica might be able to help out, and if it's the week after that, that that maybe uh, Gladys could help. Great, thank you so much. I think, I know Tim's done it once, I've done it once, I think you've done it once, Megan, so that's great to try and kind of spread it, spread it around everybody. Um, so I'll let him know that, um, a couple of things for council call for me. Um. Just to let you know, the. The chamber has asked if we could do locals Wednesdays, and I don't know if you guys remember local Wednesdays, it's from a long time ago. It was before COVID, um, and it never really got up the ground much because it was right before COVID started. And so, you know, nobody was coming downtown doing anything, um, but they'd like to start that back up and see how they can make that happen. And so basically, we would be um, allowing people to park for free from three to six. On Wednesdays, so I don't think it's gonna be a giant, be a giant impact, and we'd already gone through the whole process of saying yes before. And they never really got to try it. So.
Remind me, it wasn't during summer months?
It was not during summer months, no, this would be another, you know, kind of an experiment between now and and summer months, yeah. So just, I mean, I, we we've already approved it, but they've come back and said, can we, can we start this back up? And I said, I don't see a problem, but I wanted to just let everybody on council know about it. Um. And the other thing I have is um. I don't know if everyone has their calendar with them, but. Abigail would like to try and schedule uh, strategic planning after the election. Um, so if we can possibly do it the first part of December. Uh, then all the counselors that are here now, plus whoever is elected can hopefully participate. In strategic planning, if we don't do it then, then it would be the first part of January, and then we would ask if. Current counselors could come back for, you know, a half a day to help with the strategic planning, so I just wanted to get you. Find out if people are gonna be around first part of December um, on a Saturday like we've done before. And then Abigail was going to potentially reach out to someone to help um. Run the meeting um, and help with it, so, you know, we need to get some lead time for that too, so. Do you guys have your calendars with you? I know everyone might not, but we could get just an idea anyway from some of us.
I will be here till the point.
Of December.
So the first three weeks would be.
And I I imagine that, you know, really the the dates we'd be talking about would be the third or the tenth of December if we do it in December. Because then we get to the seventeenth and it starts into uh, school breaks for people and some people are traveling, they start going out of town. So it would probably be the third or the tenth, and then we wouldn't hit Thanksgiving week either.
I could for sure do the third, um.
Third's better for you.
Gladys, I could do December third for sure, uh, tentative on the tenth right now.
Okay, and Tim, you? Third would be better for you, okay? And you're okay with that? Other one, okay, and I'm okay with the other one, so um. All right, um. And then if we did it in, if we ended up having to do it in January, I would assume that maybe most people would like to. If we're not on council anymore. Like, get it as soon as we can do it, like the seventh. That would be.
Eric, you came back?
Yeah, I I came back my, uh, just on my computer, not to counsel, but I came back, my battery used bad, but uh. I think any of those days to the extent. You want anything from a lame duck, uh. Any, any, either three of those dates work for me.
Okay, you're you're good on any of those, okay, great, all right, so we'll check, we'll check with Mark and see what he says and um, I'll get that information to Abigail so she can. Start lining things up. Um. Council call, Tim? Megan?
Um. Uh, this is more just general interest since we've got a little time, but I attended the county meeting last week, um. There's some forestry stuff that has nothing to do with the city, but was interesting if you really want to get dirty. Um, and then they talked about this at the county meeting, I also know it a bit through work, but. Um, just kind of letting you all know, there's some water rights stuff going on with the old power note dam removal from twelve years ago. Um, that that water is being discussed for conversion in streams at this point, um, and it's senior to pretty much all the water rights in the basin, so. There's some concerns about if it's, if it's put in a stream at at that seniority gate, um, pretty much everyone in the basin. Risks their water in the summer, um. The Oregon statute says that there should be no injury to existing rights, but. The process, they just completed rulemaking in July, so the process is new, and I think we'll be the first people to go through it as a basin, so. Just heads up that there's some weird stuff happening. Those, again, more just interest than anything, you know, council needs to do anything about.
Jessica, uh, at work being us or annual economics proposal, it's an update. Conference, we have the local economists come and then share and update about what's going on. We're gonna have panels on renewable energy, there's so much happening in terms of. Production, distribution, storage. Be creative uses, um. We haven't done a keynote, uh, so, but it's November fourth. Uh, the morning of November fourth in Dallas, and I can. Time to sign on anybody.
Is it at the ready to center? Uh, Eric?
Nothing for me, mayor, thank you.
Gladys?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Um. Uh, update on my state working, I forgot, I I've spent hours on that today, so I should do another update. Um. We have um, Oregon and Washington legislators coming October fourteenth, so we're putting together a. Group meeting with some panelists uh, for that. Um, to just to let the legislature know. We need money and why we need it, um, and then we're also doing um, inner uh. I guess you call it lobbying calls, Oregon and Washington side both, um, ahead of time, and so I've got numerous phone calls this week on that. So, but things are going forward, it's all good news, um, just taking quite a bit of time to do that. Seems like there was one of the, oh, um, I went to, I guess it was called the Edge meeting, is that right? Jessica was there, she was, she was actually our fearless leader for the, for that, and I was just filling in for Abigail. Um, and I thought one of the things was interesting, it was the regional solutions from state level. And then of the the city, the county, or uh, city of Cascade Locks. Uh, tourism industry, just kind of letting people know what's going on, um, you know. That might, one might affect affect another, and one of the things, interesting things that's happening in the county was that um, they're starting to look at. Uh, Parkdale and Odell. Um, to, the way it was kind of described to me, it was like putting an urban growth boundary around those. Because they're not incorporated cities and they still won't be incorporated cities. But if they actually get this boundary around them, then they can actually do more within the city, those those towns, whatever you want to call it. Um, for housing, for, you know, density and things like that. Um, if, once, once they get that, that done, there's a process for doing it, it's long and complicated, but they're actually starting it. They're gonna start a park deal first, so that this, it's good news for, I think it's good news for housing in the long run, so. All right, I think that's it, guys. All right, we adjourned, it is seven fifteen and it's dark. Good night, guys, thank y'all. Thanks.
Good night.